All right, we're in the meeting at a whatever that says. I can't see that from here.
Six thirty-four.
Well, depends on which clock.
Six thirty-four.
I can see it. Perfect, thank you. Okay. All right, any need for executive? I know I have one legal and one personnel. Anybody else have anything? The motion to go an executive?
So moved.
Zack.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any need to amend the agenda?
Hold on, Mark's coming on.
Oh.
Move to accept the agenda?
Oh, wait, I was gonna amend. I was waiting to see if Mark was getting it.
Oh, well.
Um, I think it's not a big amendment, but where we have emergency management director position is open. We also need an alternate for the Otter Creek C U D. Hi, Mark.
Hey.
Mark, you're muted.
He's still talking.
His mute, it looks like.
He is muted, and I've asked him to unmute. He'll figure it out. All right, thank you.
Do we have a motion to add the agenda as amended?
So moved.
On favor, say aye.
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 Uh, anything on the meeting minutes of December seventh?
Oh, you sure? Do you need one?
Found it, I found it, I think so.
You have ready your...
You want, yeah, you want all the orders too? Your paychecks are on top, so you just have to find your envelope.
Don't be taking them all, Joe.
Wow, looking to get the best one.
Were there any questions on the orders? You're not supposed to be signing them already? Oh, is it? I didn't even look at it.
I don't know where yours is. I got my last.
Oh, really?
Okay. That was another board meeting. And, and gave it to me early.
Actually, I think it was Helen.
Probably. Somebody did.
It didn't go on my account, so it's good.
Oh, okay.
Think this can all...
No, Joe, there's one more.
One more somewhere.
Take, that goes with that.
Okay.
Sorry, I had it all piled up on my desk this week. No, they're both red.
Try that.
He said use different colors.
No, because red is for select board and blue is for water and sewer. Talk things straight.
All right, town manager's report is presented by our assistant town manager.
Uh, I just have a few things. Some of them I just need approvals on.
Sure.
Some things are what's happened in the last week. Police chief want me to let you guys know the Taser quote came back the same as the original. There was no increase in price. The second thing is, we've been receiving emails over the last day or so. I checked with Sean. I think it's a wastewater thing to have an E P C R A Tier Two reporting. It's for emergency and hazardous chemical inventory. They're offering a Zoom class Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, on what the reporting requirements are. I don't know if you want me to take it or if someone here is first in this.
I am not first in any wastewater issues at all. You?
Is it okay if I sign onto the Zoom?
Absolutely, that'd be great.
I just want to make sure we stay compliant.
Yeah, thank you.
The second thing was, and I had mentioned this to Dave, V L C T is offering two classes about town meeting. They're gonna be ten dollars apiece. I'd like to take them both because they have to do with the warning and voting legal requirements and stuff, and it's nothing that I know anything about.
Yep, sure.
So I just wanted to make sure that was okay.
If you can find the time, go for it.
Uh, we received a celebration of life for Steve Shild, I believe.
Oh.
Uh, he passed away. It's hosted by Rutland Regional Planning Commission. I have the invite here. You have to R S V P if anybody's interested in attending. I don't, I did not know the gentleman.
Can you pass that around?
Yep, I can.
You must have known him from the meeting, right?
Um, I've met him, yeah.
I don't know, he's very romantic, I would tell.
Um, when you came in tonight, you had a copy. It said Dear Town Clerk. Helen wanted me to pass that on. It is the Rutland Regional Budget. Forget exactly what she called it, but I'm passing that on. No, it, she said it was a Rutland County Budget. It says proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Rutland County Budget. It's done by the Assistant Judge Jean Collody and Assistant Judge Stephen Bernard Senior. And then Lisa Wright had asked me to pass on the Commissioner of Taxes Release Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Education Tax Letter. Would you guys?
Yep.
I want to pass that on to you. B Trans Grants and Aid. I just need your signature on this, please.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure. It could be just select board chair, so just Alicia needs to sign it, please. Chad and I worked on this to get it ready for submittal, so that can just go to Alicia.
Great.
For signature, please. I have talked to Isaac about the Village Farm Grant. He's aware of the shifting, changing, and he's gonna send us information because we have to create a new login for that. But right now, there's nothing pending on that, so we're not holding anything up with having to change login information.
Okay, I know. That just reminded me, I got an email from someone from the Village Farm that something didn't get signed by Brenda before she left. That it was holding up the planning grant, release of funds.
It should not, because I talked to Isaac. He said that she did submit everything.
Okay.
He has all of the banking information and all of the letters signed that he's aware of. He was gonna double-check it, but I've not heard back from him.
Okay.
But he said he would be in the next two weeks after the holidays here.
Mm-hmm.
He said if we need to, we can use that login information that I have for the next two weeks. And then after that, we're gonna need to create a new one.
Okay.
Uh, I just want to let you guys know that. He's also waiting for the town attorney to approve a sub-grant agreement. He said that you guys may be aware of that.
Oh.
Gary's reviewing it.
Yep.
And I told him that he needs to make a couple of changes to it, so he was gonna do that and resend it to Gary.
All right, great.
Uh, Vinnie from Vermont Digital came to change passwords.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have an email into what was, um, Jackson Whalen.
Oh, yeah.
To try to figure out, being able to change email passwords. I have not heard back from him. But he said that we may want user agreements for those that get town email on their personal devices going forward. He said it might be something we want to look into. And he said the town should have a, uh, one town phone that stays in the town offices so that we can get the credentials in it because more and more tech is asking for a two-part authentication.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, we don't have a town item that stays in the office to receive those codes. He said whatever we do, don't lock down accounts right now because we wouldn't have access to our internet or anything.
Okay.
If we don't, if we hit the wrong button, so.
I'm not touching anything.
He also, um, we've been after him for a few months to give us a quote on getting printers. My printer, the wheels are going, so every fifth page, it jams up and I have to pull out the drawer, shake it. Helen's doesn't print envelopes anymore, and there's something wrong with pads, but I'm not sure what. So they're four hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece. They would all be the exact same, so they would use the same toners and everything.
Mm-hmm.
It would change us to laser jets, so we would probably see a better life for, life use out of the toners and such. But we need approval for spending four hundred and seventy-five dollars times three printers for...
Is that for all of them?
Uh, it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece.
Yeah.
And he said it's a hundred and five dollars per hour plus travel to install and configure, but it shouldn't take that long.
Okay.
Um, but Helen said bring it to you guys to see if you wanted to do that.
We need functioning printers, so.
Just can't live without printers, so yes.
Do it, I guess.
I'll make the motion to go ahead with that.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
On favor, say aye.
Aye. Make the legal.
Mark?
And then, um, the Chittenden Reservoir Committee, and I don't know the right term for it, so I'm probably calling it the wrong thing, had mentioned that they're gonna be doing a FEMA virtual tabletop exercise. They have picked Tuesday, January tenth, from twelve to four to do this at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Large Conference Room. Uh, we have to register if we want to participate in this by Wednesday, December twenty-eighth.
Can I say that again? I thought I had the flyer.
No wonder.
It's Tuesday, January tenth. I didn't send a flyer. I can make copies of the flyer, though. I need a signature because Dr. Larson is changing, retiring and converting his office building to a primary residence. So this just needs, I've already filled out what we had to do, um, for the yeses and nos. So I just need Alicia's signature on that, please. And I did have to put in an insurance claim from a low-lying limb on Saturday that hit a community member's truck, and I have taken care of that with V L C T, so that should be all set. And I will be meeting with Brian Sanderson at the Agency of Transportation Tuesday at eleven o'clock at his offices to turn in, um, the grants that we have, like the Grants and Aid and the West Creek Culver final paperwork. I'm submitting it to him in person to make sure everything goes okay. And he said he'll go over whatever grants we have outstanding so that we have a list of them.
Just to back up, did you want to go to that FEMA thing?
I can.
Yeah. Do you think more than one person could go?
They said that it could. They said we could do police, fire, rescue, select board, person in-house, et cetera.
Great, yeah.
I can, I can register for that.
Okay. I want to check my calendar. I might, if I'm free, I'd like to go.
Okay.
Interested in that.
I think that's it for town manager.
Okay.
I have one question. What has happened with our phone system? Because like, that was a month or two ago, we agreed to have a whole new system.
So right now, all of the paperwork is in Comcast's hands. We have finalized everything. We've given them everybody's extension numbers, all of, all of that information. And right now, it's going through Comcast's web.
Okay.
So it, they are supposed to be coming.
Because while tonight, we needed...
Oh, I know.
A conference, and it's like, we're here, it's, yeah. So it made, reminded me that we agreed to do that.
It, no, it has been in the works, and everything, as far as I know, has been signed for that.
Okay.
I had been CC'd in emails for that and had been following it, so I think we're okay with that.
Yeah.
And it's still, it's right now waiting for Comcast to assign it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any select board member remarks? I was just gonna make note of the fact that, um, the Brandon Pittsford reporter has gone, um... Where does it go on? Nonprofit, right? It's nonprofit now?
Mm-hmm.
So they're not having, which is why like, there's no reporter that's on. So they're asking like, people to send in some information from time to time. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. If anybody has anything interesting they'd like to see in the reporter. Anybody else have anything? Uh, public comment? Butch, would you like to?
Butch, also thank you, Mr. Just to remind you, the legislative session starts on four January. And if you, uh, if you need something, or if you have an idea that you need something for the town, uh, let me know. Gotcha. And our drafting deadline is mid-February. But to get a good draft, it should be as soon as possible. And I'd be happy to work with anybody that, that needs me to carry something for you to my table.
Okay.
I've got something right now.
Good.
Uh, given the fact that the state police is not doing a whole lot anymore as far as enforcement, can you get some kind of a law in there that we can keep the majority of our traffic tickets rather than having to send them to the state?
So I need to know some information from you on that. So I need to know, uh, where you're, uh, giving the most of your traffic tickets. Are they on high, high town highways, or are they on state highways? What are the percentages that she, that Town of Pittsburgh is currently getting on? I think there's two different percentages there. And, and I can clearly, uh, take that forward to see, uh, what's happening. I mean, the most you're patrolling is on Route Seven?
I don't think so.
I don't think most would say.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying. These are the kind of questions that we'll get asked.
We just need to get the specific information they get.
Yeah, so we can, we can, we can look at that. We can have a bill drafted, and somebody will have to come up here to testify in person. So.
You want to hear it?
More than happy to do that.
Depends on when. I gotta go.
Yeah, I'll work with, I'll work with you and Alicia to...
Okay, yeah. I mean, I just think it's becoming an issue.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
We're doing their work. We ought to...
Well, that's been going on for a long time. The Fire Department's been doing state police work for twenty years.
Yeah.
No, I know, but it's, they're, they just keep backing down.
They do.
And we're doing more and more.
And we're doing more and more, so, you know.
Yep.
And they're doing less and less.
More and more money.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
Sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, I think, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Could I just ask that people that are speaking to speak up because we're having trouble hearing?
Sure.
Oh, sure.
Either here or there, grandpa.
Heard that one.
Hey, Mark!
So, yeah.
Speaking of a microphone, you can't really hear.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll, uh, get, wait for your phone call to say when you've got some of that...
Okay.
Information ready to go.
Yeah.
And then I'll have a, I'll have a bill drafted and, uh, see where we go with that. Happy to do that.
No harm in asking.
No harm in asking. No harm in drafting a bill.
Yep.
I think Mike's got pretty much that all listed.
Probably has all those, yeah.
So it's just... We get the reports. It's a matter of putting it all together.
Yep. So then when you testify, we'll have something concrete. We'll get those kind of questions when you testify. And then we want to have good answers for it, yeah. Thank you. I guess, for now, I guess that's it.
Okay.
I'll talk to you on our funding later.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Well, let's skip old business, and we'll go to new business. How the Otter Creek, uh, address us on your year-end report?
Yes, um, so Doug Perkins, for those of you who don't remember me from the last time.
Yep.
Jeff Schuman is the Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees. He's here tonight as well. Uh, the other representative on your board is Steve Belcher, who I thought was gonna be here tonight, but...
I'm surprised he's not.
He's, I'm surprised he's not.
Probably like me, forgot.
In any case, I'm gonna give a quick synopsis of what was in the annual report that was sent to the town clerk for included, inclusion in your, your town report.
Mm-hmm.
That was done back in November. And at this point, you also have the assessment for next year, but I'll talk about that a little bit, too. So this year was a well-above-average year for adult mosquito population in this area. That's in sharp contrast to the whole rest of the Northeast, who experienced very low numbers of adult mosquitoes because of the drought. So we had some drought here, but we still got a lot of adult mosquitoes for some reason. As a consequence of that, we continued the program that we had last year, which was to spray each root once a week if the, uh, thresholds were met in terms of capturing adult mosquitoes, which they almost always were. So that seemed to be very successful. The feedback we've gotten thus far has been very positive that we kept things under control this year. Uh, but it meant that we did a lot of spraying, too. Our pesticide general permit is renewed every five years. Two thousand twenty-two is the fifth anniversary, so we had to renew this year. Uh, that was done. Uh, we submitted the paperwork back in August. It was approved in October. Uh, so we're good to go for another five years with our state permit. The good news is that nobody commented on our submissions. You don't comment on the submission. You don't have any standing to sue us when the permit was issued, which is, as you know, what happened five years ago. Uh, there was a lawsuit that claimed that we hadn't provided sufficient justification for the permit issue. Now, we're, we've crossed that hurdle this year. We should be good to go for five years. As you remember, we spent sixty thousand dollars of the taxpayer's money in lawyer fees five years ago. And, and ultimately, the lawsuit was withdrawn with prejudice. So we have an algorithm that we use to determine what is an equitable assessment of our expenses for each town. That algorithm has been in place for probably twenty-plus years. A lot of it is based on census data. So when we finally got the twenty-twenty census data this year, we said, hmm, we need to update it. We did. And then we went, ah! We don't like these answers. And the reason is that two of the towns in our district, their population went up a bit, and the other towns, it went down. And because so much of the old algorithm was based on the number of households, seventy-five percent of the weighting in that algorithm was households. It really threw things off. And we had a town, I won't mention Brandon's name, that would have gone up by about fifty percent in their assessment. And we had another town, I won't mention Goshen, that would have gone down by about seventy-five percent. And just, it wasn't gonna fly. So, uh, the board decided to convene an ad hoc committee. Jeff was the chair of that committee. One representative from each town, plus we had Proctor also provide a representative. And they developed a new algorithm, which we think, um, having test-run it, does provide an equitable distribution of our expenses back to the towns. That algorithm will go into effect for the, for fiscal year twenty-five. So not this coming July first, but the year, the year after. Because we'd already made the decision to go back to the old algorithm without the updated data, because everybody was happy with that, for this coming year. So that's what your assessment for the fiscal year that starts on July, this, this coming in twenty-twenty-three is based on. But, um, so you'll see some changes. If you want to know exactly what those are, I can, I've got the paperwork with me. I can tell you that. Inflation's hit everybody hard this year. That's no surprise. Us, too. Uh, our budget has got to go up by five percent this year, which is the limit based on the agreement. But because we get some outside sources of funding, the town's assessment is only going up three percent. So there's good news there. Jeff and I attended the Northeast Mosquito Control Association Conference beginning of December. A lot of discussion about ticks. Because it's becoming an increasing health problem, human health problem. And the tick population is exploding in the north, in the east of the U.S. So lots of talk about that. There's a lot of surveillance going on. In fact, here in Vermont, there's a big surveillance program. There is a lot of research going on and tick, tick-borne diseases and transmission and all that sort of thing. There's hardly any control effort going on. But the CDC representative who is there said, you know, if we're gonna get involved in controlling these things, it's probably the insect control districts that should be, should be tasked with this. Nothing's coming down the road yet, but just a heads up that in the future, if this becomes a serious issue in the towns around here, um, that might be a way to go.
It already is.
It is a problem.
Everybody I know has illnesses. Like everybody.
Right now, the only control efforts that are going on are private landowners having people like Orkin come in and spray the, their lawns and their, and their hedges and things like that.
I have mine sprayed.
Yeah.
After several years, oh, yeah.
Yeah. So it does work. There's other things that can be done. Spraying pesticides is never the, should be, should never be the first choice.
Right.
Um, habitat modification and reduction is one thing. And the, the cycle of disease propagation within the ticks goes from tick to either deer or mice, and they serve as the reservoir for the disease. And then another tick bites the deer or mouse, and then bites a human, and trans, hits the disease. So you can do some things with vaccinating deer. And I don't know what they do, but they do something with mice, not, not exterminate them, but, uh, treat them somehow so they don't pass the disease along. So, anyway.
Yeah.
Something for the future, just to think about. We have heard a rumor that Brenda Fox Howard is no longer your town manager.
That is true, yes.
Is she no longer a member of our Board of Trustees?
No, I'm realizing as we're talking, I should add that on to our third, um, area where we need to fill positions. So I mean, I, um, I was the alternate.
Yep.
So now I can be the second.
Great.
Happy to do that, and we can go find an alternate.
Super. When you're doing that, we are desperately in need of somebody with a business or financial or accounting background because our treasurer, who's Brad Laws, who's somebody you may know, has made it crystal clear that this is his last year being the treasurer. He wanted to end at the last election, and I twisted his arm real bad, and there's some bruises. And he said, okay, one more year, but only one more year. So I really need somebody to be, step up and be our treasurer next November.
Okay.
Obviously, there are some vacancies on the board, not just in Pittsford, but Salisbury has a vacancy, so does Brandon. And I'm, same, same, uh, him to them, too. Please find us somebody with that kind of a background to step up to that plate.
All right.
Appreciate that, if you could do that.
Okay.
And that's all I've got, other than to answer any questions that you might have.
I had no mosquitoes in my place this year.
No, other than, yeah, great job done.
They sprayed. So great, great this summer.
But they worked long hours and really did a lot of spraying.
Yeah.
We didn't find larvae this year for some reason. There was a little bit in Goshen, a little bit in Salisbury, and hardly anything anywhere else. Our first choice, obviously, is to get larvicide in the water and kill the larvae before they can become adults, but we didn't find them. Yeah. We did find a lot of mosquitoes this year that are woodland breeders.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't the predominant species, but there were a lot of them. So, and they, we can't treat the woods.
Right, right, yep. I know, Butch, you had...
So I'm curious as to how much money you spent out of your larvicide grant?
We, we consumed the entire larvicide grant. And plus, plus twenty-five percent.
Okay.
But the larvicide grant, um, tells us to do a lot of surveillance. And...
Very familiar.
And species identification. So a lot of that money went to those two activities. So we're going out trying to find larvae, and we're going out, and when, when we captured adult mosquitoes, we spent a lot of time then identifying them and counting.
So did you apply for the extra money you spent to the Agency of Agriculture?
No, because, no, because the grant requires us to, to spend twenty-five percent in addition as an in-kind match.
Requires you to match the twenty-five percent of the seventy thousand. So they allowed you to use that twenty-five percent towards their match?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so we, we spent a few thousand dollars more than that. Maybe we're in the ninety thousand range and the grant plus...
Make sure you get all the money that you can.
We did. We got all seventy thousand. We went over and didn't get paid for about five thousand dollars worth of work.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Not, not a significant amount.
Right, right.
Although, an extra five thousand... Although, an extra five thousand dollars would be nice.
So make sure there are avenues that you can take to get this money.
We, as you know, Butch, we sent in a letter to the Secretary of Ag. Have not had a response.
So have you considered introducing a bill to increase your allocation out of the grant program?
No. And the reason is that left a really bad taste in the Agency of Agriculture the last time the district tried to do something like that.
No, I did it last time, and it did not leave a bad taste. We just ran out of money.
Well, the feedback I've gotten is, they weren't real pleased.
Kerry Jagair was, actually helped me draft the bill. So if it's something you want to consider, I'd be more than happy to.
It hasn't budged at all, right? It hasn't budged at all.
Well, when I got there, it was zero. So we're at seventy. We're at a hundred and forty thousand for the whole program. The Otter Creek District is, they share with the Lament Fair. And the argument we made at the time was the acreage is much higher in this district than it is in Lament Fair.
And it's even higher than we thought.
Yeah. And now you've taken on Proctor. Do you do larvicide in Proctor?
We do full service in Proctor, yes. One of the things I had done this year is I asked I asked the two Regional Planning Commission folks to go into the DEC's database and actually figure out how many acres of Class II wetlands we have in the six towns. The number we've used historically is six thousand acres? No, sixteen thousand acres.
That's quite an undercount, huh?
Yeah, it was quite an undercount.
And you find larvae, and you find larvae in all sixteen thousand acres?
Yeah, and about thirty percent of it is so brush-covered that we can't even get into it. So that's. Yeah, unless you go in the area.
Is Proctor officially a member of the district?
We're visiting them next Tuesday, and that's on my list of questions. Ask them, what do you folks think of doing?
Yeah, okay.
So we'll see. I am hopeful that they will join us as a town meeting next year. But it's up to the citizens of Proctor to make that decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. You said Class II went up to sixteen thousand from six thousand acres?
Correct.
So I think the wetlands people are reclassifying land that was not classified wetlands as wetland. Is that correct, isn't it?
I don't know.
Yeah, my experience is with them is they're broadening their field, which really isn't. Some of the stuff they're telling me is wetland really isn't. It's just how they're locating maps. So I just say you might want to double-check those numbers, because they're being quite aggressive with what they're calling wetland.
Unfortunately, we have not the technology to be able to double-check those numbers. All that information is in the DEC's database, and that's what the Regional Planning Commissions pulled it from.
Yeah, I'd be cautious in believing that number.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Any questions at any time, call Steve Belchik.
Sounds good. All right, have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you. Happy holidays to you.
Chad. All right. What? No, no.
You're not?
All right, so let's see. So we got you on for reclassification of roads.
Yeah, I kind of hate to bring this back up, but.
I know, because it's Old Hubbardon Road and what? It's something else, right?
No, well, Old Hubbardon Road is the first, the reclassification part. As you know, it's been upgraded five years. Two thousand seventeen was upgraded. And even before the upgrade, there's a portion that we've maintained. And, I mean, since I've been here, which is my seventeenth winter and is years before that. So even if we don't do the whole stretch, there's at least, I think it's six, six tenths of a mile. That's Class Four. That could be Class Three, where the town could receive more funding from the state. Just seems kind of foolish not to. Like I said, I know the last time, there was a lot of pushback from it.
So how long is the whole section?
I think that's actually a point six. Yeah, it's from.
Well, Russo's driveway, right?
Pretty much, yeah, just past Russo's up to Fire Hill. So, I mean.
But that farther end, you've always maintained, because there's houses on that.
Well, that's it. There's two houses down. That's always been maintained. That's still Class Four. So even if, from Fire Hill down to Sumner's property or former property. And I know there's, I know it's got to be.
Yeah, it's been five years.
Like I said, I know it's got to be. Which just seems foolish not to receive the funding. Just thought I'd bring that up. So, see, I'm trying to get us money.
What's that?
Trying to get us some money.
Well, you better get us some money.
I know, because I'm going to need cash for some more later.
Pretty rare that you come in here and you don't have your hand out for something.
He still wants that boom truck.
Yeah, I know. Boom truck for a while. He would dangle from a tree.
He gave us a really good amended budget.
So we need a motion on this?
Well, there's another.
There's a process.
There's got to be a process.
Yeah, so I'm just.
So we need to find the process runs into a big roadblock.
Yeah, I'm just making you aware of it and letting you take it from there. You know, maybe people calm down at this point, and it might not be as big of a deal as it was. But it's just, yeah. Exactly what you have to do now, I know you got to notify all the homeowners, obviously, on the road. And I don't know what the other rest of it is, but, yeah.
Does the state have to, they have to check it out to verify that it meets the requirements?
I'm assuming so. I've never been a part of this upgrading a road, so I don't know the procedure, but.
Wasn't there a second one too?
Yeah, I'm sure.
That's, I had that under old business, the thing that you're looking at right there. Because Brenda told me it was old business because it stemmed from John.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking at the emails. It's old.
Is that the Old Hubbardon? Or what's next?
The Town Highway Number Twenty.
Oh, yeah, that's a different.
Oh, which is the stretch running from Town Highway Nineteen.
Shaw Road off of Hollis Secory Road.
Oh, that driveway?
Pretty much, yeah. What, I don't even think it's a tenth of a mile now.
Do we plow it? Oh, we do? Oh, okay.
It says two hundred and twelve feet. It's two hundred and twelve feet is what it says here.
It's, yeah, I think it like go, squash the quarry, and then there's another driveway. Yeah, I mean, ideally, if we could give up the whole thing, but I think there's, yeah, it's whatever the numbers are there. It was, yeah, it was when John was here, the state contacted us about that.
But those people there are kind of upset about everything right now, so might not be the time to declassify the road. If we're going to do that, we'll put that one off for a while. It's only two hundred feet.
And actually, what the reclassifying is, has nothing to do with what we plow or maintain. I mean, it's just, that's not going to affect us at all. It just actually make it more accurate to what we actually do maintain. And I think Old Hubbardon had reclassification part as well. I don't know if you have that as well, if it was only a Shaw Road, but. Another email from the state pertaining to the upper end.
Oh, by Sam's?
Yeah, where we turn around. It was like a tenth of a mile there. It's kind of same, same thing.
So how far do you plow? Oh, excuse me.
Right to where it lies.
So by, what's your McCollum House?
It used to be Miller.
Miller, yeah, Miller.
Yeah, they just sold it.
Oh, that Y, okay. So that would kind of fit in with that other road with the.
Yeah, I mean, again, that was, that the state had contacted us about, like, where we ended and stuff, so.
No, but I'm saying you got from, well, Russo's driveway up through, that's all the same road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's all the same.
So it all fits in together, basically.
But that's all Class Three from Fire Hill up to where we turn around.
Oh, it is Class Three. Oh, okay.
The only Class Four is from Fire Hill down to.
So what was the reclassification of that section then?
It's just the numbers on the state's numbers. It was the distance. I wasn't expecting that. Questions tonight. Prepare for that, sorry.
Well, no, I was just, you were saying reclassifying, so I was thinking that was Class Four too, but it isn't. That's Class Three.
No, that's all Class Three. Yeah, it was just, I think, adjusting the distance.
So do we need a motion to start the process? Or is this just something that we need to look into somewhere?
I guess it's a quick question.
Yeah, what do we do? We just start the wheel?
Don't do it our way. Just, we'll get back to you.
A little more research to get back.
Well, no, I think we need to research what it is.
Research what we need to do, yeah.
I mean, if we find it, it's an onerous task, and it's going to cause more headaches than we need, then, you know.
Yeah, I. And I don't know what dollar figure you'd end up receiving doing it, like I said, if it's worth that.
The aggravation, the potential aggravation of doing it.
Did you have something about that?
I was just going to ask, do you want me to ask Brian Sanderson from the Agency of Transportation?
Well, yeah. That would be a very, very good idea, yes.
I'll just add it to the stack.
It's a statute, it's a statute.
It's a question that probably guide us in the right direction without a lot of headache.
That sounds good.
But it may not be worth fifteen cents.
But, yeah, they are.
How much aggravation do you want? I caught you a lot more than one of them.
There's only one new homeowner on there.
Could have the first time.
All right. And then we have roads speed limit posting. I did see the list, but now I can't find. It was so organized for like a minute.
Did you, you added some stuff to it, did you?
Uh, no, I never did adjust.
You didn't adjust?
No, I'm sorry.
Well, we need to adjust it before we.
Yeah, there's a couple.
We do it one time.
What's he got, seventy miles an hour on your road?
No, mine fifteen.
Fifteen? You can't, you can't.
Oh, we do our own, but you don't, you don't maintain ours.
You can't drive fifteen.
Actually, mine even say five. I don't know.
It says fifteen for your road.
Doesn't it say fifteen? That's what I thought.
I think.
Nobody does it.
To do this, I think, is another thing, another process, right? Needs to be traffic study and all that.
Probably. We need to look into that too, I guess.
Well, yeah, and probably find out which of the roads it's most of an issue on. I mean, because some of them are dead ends. How many, how many speeders are going down dead-end roads?
You'd be surprised. Some of them are pretty short, too.
Well, exactly, and they're listed at thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, I mean, handy lane.
I guess that I'm thinking if the issue is more that speed, you know, like tickets are not enforceable if there's not a sign, right? I thought that was essentially the issue. So maybe like figuring out what roads are. Well, that wouldn't be a you question. That'd be a chief whorful question, I suppose, which roads are the most.
Right. I mean, I agree with.
Pleasant by the school, which is, that's thirty, I think.
Yeah, Pleasant, yeah. Well, Cross.
Canyon and Cross.
Crazy there.
Right, and there's no sign on. So, yeah, we'd have to put up thirty mile speed limit on Cross Street. Little drag strip. But, yeah, I mean, it's, I guess, like, most, majority of our dirt roads. Hollis Secory, I mean, like Fire Hill and Trigger Hollow. Thirty-five's reasonable.
You got Syndicate now's got thirty-five.
Right, well, they're all, they're all, should be. But, I mean, that's kind of pushing it on a lot of it, a lot of them. I think thirty's plenty for.
That's a little dirt road and not posted, isn't it?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, is that those?
It's not fifty unless a road.
Fifty if they're not posted.
Roads are fifty miles an hour.
It's a state speed limit.
Unless, state speed limit, unless they're posted at a lower rate. The minimum rate is twenty-five. And to go below twenty-five, you have to have a traffic study. Oh, so they can adjust?
You may.
I'll read it.
Well, I don't know, because when we did out by the, was it Cake House or whatever that house is, when we straightened that out, which it was ridiculous the way it was, because it was thirty, then it went to thirty-five, then twenty-five, then back up. But we had to have a traffic study for that in order to change that.
Those are pretty simplified studies. It's not like you're taking something from like fifty to twenty-five. Really takes some serious work, but.
Right, but, I mean, regional just goes and gets data on what people are driving, and you use that to determine your speed. Yeah.
How they just set up the, they set up a thing.
Yeah, yeah, they said just set up a speed during the bus. Yeah.
But, yeah, that's, I just.
Where they develop down on Blueberry Hill, you got to go through Rutland Town to get back up in there. But there's two new houses up in there now, and there's going to be a couple more. Is the town going to get roped into maintaining some kind of a road up there? I would hope not.
I hope not. That's a long ways to get to.
That's all private.
It is.
Oh, private road, I think.
Is it? No.
I've heard that's private.
Yeah, private road.
Well, it is now. It's all brand new, but.
Private road.
I wondered whether there's any possibility, because of the number of houses, if they petitioned, would they?
They'd have to petition.
I would hope.
We don't take any other private roads, are we, Tom?
No. They're going to take mine now before they take that one.
My understanding is Rutland Town won't hear of it, so they're having to pay contractors to qualify for them right now.
So they got into trouble putting that up in there with Rutland Town, if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're correct, Joe.
That's just Jimmy Gray's, you don't care.
We're going to send you a bill for your part soon, right?
So, yeah. So no money, just a little work for you guys.
Okay, thanks. All right, anything else? That's all?
Did you want me to ask Brian Sanderson about the speed limits too, and what we need to do?
We should just give Brian a little page.
I can give you the statute citation if you want.
All right, and then the Pittsburgh Snowmadd's approval for snowmobile travel, which is the same list of roads that we. I'll favorite say aye.
Aye, that's quick. That's every year.
Same thing every year.
Um, now, Veterans Memorial Fund, ARPA.
What should we ask them for?
I know. Well, we have three thousand left. There's three.
They got to pay?
Yeah. So, I mean, I had talked to Hank. He said that it was, had been agreed upon. Not formally, though, not voted on by the board. It was just like, whatever's left after grants and fundraising, we'll take care of it. So I don't know what we want, if we want to, if we want to, or we can't, even if we can take it out of ARPA, which I think not, because it's a project that's already completed, correct? So then, Hank said it was, again, agreed at the time, just to take it out of the general fund. So.
We should pay, I mean, it's on the wall out there.
I know, it's beautiful. It's great. Three thousand bucks, you know.
The fund here, it's all built in red. It's all built in red. Not a building fund, I guess.
Well, we got, yeah, we got building fund. We need to move our bushes, so we should be able to pay for that.
Don't do anything yet, okay.
Oh, okay.
We'll continue this discussion.
We'll hold out a little bit. We'll table it for tonight.
We'll table it. Um, okay, so moderator for town meeting, were you able to get ahold of our previous town moderator? Um, okay, uh, so moderator for town meeting, were you able to get ahold of our, our previous town moderator?
I've got a list for you.
Oh, you do?
It was like in Barack or somewhere.
No, no, our previous, his dad.
His dad, oh, okay, all right, oh, okay.
Hold on, I've already...
See if his dad would step back in while...
So I called his ba- dad and I got a no, and he gave me a list of names. So I have called and gotten nos from Jim Carvey, John Carrera, Danny Adams, Danny Keith, and Sam Markowski.
All nos?
All nos. Danny Adams said, worst case scenario, if we absolutely beat every bush we have and can't find anybody, probably could have his arm twisted.
Well, let's twist it.
I don't know if you guys have somebody else that you are thinking of, Helen thought of a couple more names, I said, let me ask the board before we keep calling everybody and their brother.
If you got somebody, I don't know.
Have a specific person in mind at all?
I know Jim Douglas.
What's Jim? Carvey did a good job.
I know, but he said, no, thank you.
I know, he does.
He's had enough.
He was very polite about it.
He's had a vacation the last couple of years.
I know, until we gave him a couple of years off, what do you want?
All right, well, I guess, yeah, if Helen has some names, I guess, save her, if willing, because I can't think of anyone.
Then call Dan and say, listen, we can't find anybody. It's a one-year de- one-year deal, you know, we won't call you again, we can lie a little. Good joke.
One year with the privilege of more.
Yeah, well, no.
All right, so we are currently, uh, need, um, two emergency management director positions, and, all right, one's emergency services and one's emergency management, correct?
The management director would be Tim Cornell.
So we, okay, so we have some names, people confirmed.
And his backup is gonna be Stephen Shortleys.
I have this form now that then that needs to be filled out, please, can you pass that to Alicia?
Is the alternate?
Steve's the alternate. I make a motion that we appoint both of those people.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm gonna fill this out later, because I'm not gonna be able to fill this out and talk.
Alicia?
Yes.
What about Rob Spensley for town moderator? Do you think you might do that?
Oh, I'll ask him. That's a good, that's a good idea.
He's my attorney.
Yep, that'd be great, if he would consider doing it. Might be good mitts for him.
All right, yeah, I'll call him.
Tell him we'd like to twist one of his arms, not all of them, but...
Just one. Okay, all right, thanks, that's a good idea, Mark. Um, okay, so those positions we have filled, and then we do, so the Otter Creek, um, CUD, we need an alternate. Anybody interested in the room?
The CUD or the CCW?
CUD, the, the Communications Union District. Oh, no, that was when we amended the agenda, that's why I added that on. Well, I hear nobody saying anything, so, I guess the search for that continues as well. Um, yeah, okay, so we, so we need, um, an alternate for the CUD and for the mosquito district. Just throwing that out there, so...
Well, you suppose, I'm just throwing this out, Dan Adams got a name, I mean, he's a businessman, you suppose he'd be interested in that mosquito one?
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Worth asking him?
Yeah. All right. I don't mind reaching out to him and, if you'd like...
Okay, that'd be great.
He's just a guy.
Yeah, I know. And if he's, isn't interested, maybe he knows somebody that, you know, I mean, we'll just kind of get it, get it rolling there.
Yep.
Um, and what is the acronym, because I think we have it on Otter Creek?
It's changed twice.
I know, Otter Creek Watershed.
O-C-C-W-D-C.
Oh my God, uh, I'm gonna scratch out that and just put mosquitoes.
There you go. Mosquito ward.
All right, um, okay, so, um, town report.
So town report, hold on a second, I just have to fill my note from last year. We have received from Repro, they're the ones that do the, uh, get the mailing ready, they are the ones that print it and everything, they've given me deadlines that they would like us to sign and agree to. They want a PDF or hard copy to scan and a mailing list by Friday, February third. Um, they'll give us a complete proof Thursday, February ninth, we have to have their final proof approved by the tenth. Postage check will be due by Wednesday, February fifteenth. The reports will be delivered to the post office February twenty-second. They'll send us the remaining reports not mailed after the mailing is complete, and a PDF of the final report from the printer emailed to the town will be Friday, March third, is what they are recommending. Um, and if we need to change these dates, they're doing an absurd amount of towns' town reports, and they said that there's not a lot of flexibility in this, so we need to either agree to it or give that and go back and forth with them to try to finalize.
Right, right.
It gives trouble, it puts it real close to town meeting. Doesn't give people time.
It does, but I think this is kind of the schedule that you guys have run on the last few years for your towns.
Yeah, no, I know, I was trying to figure, it doesn't go to March, I already looked, I already looked.
Our town meeting will be March sixth.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so, okay.
That's the first Monday.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, we need to make a decision, right, to put in, did we, did we need to make a decision about whether to put in delinquent tax in there or not? We often do, right, but we discussed not doing that?
No, that was a couple of years ago.
No, like a couple of meetings ago, it was brought up.
No, we talked about you, Joe, and I talked about it before the last meeting. Because these were, these were my questions that I had asked to be submitted to you as a board, and I don't know if they ever were. Um, does the Declaration of Inclusion still need to be in there? It was adopted November fourth, twenty twenty, and was in the last report, so I didn't know if we needed to include the Declaration of Inclusion again.
Keeping in mind that every page costs more, is kind of the thinking here.
So, um, that was one of my questions. Another one was, the State Board of Statistics has stated they are against towns publishing the births, deaths, and marriages in the town reports.
You're laughing, that's come up already?
According, according to Helen, this was an on-the-floor vote at town meeting one year by Gordon DeLong, it is going to take a town vote to change it.
That's correct.
So, do we need to issue a warrant for that?
You'd have to warrant it to, to delete.
And Helen and I are asking if we can do a warrant to remove them, to see if the town will pass it, because we are, the State Board of Statistics has stated they're against towns publishing them.
Good to hell with the state.
Should we discuss?
And when we...
It's all the more reason to do it, I, I would say.
Is this information volunteered, or is it just because all the rec, it's just...
It's in the records, but the reason that they're saying that they don't want it done is because it allows for children's identities to be stolen and that's stuff.
Get a life, you know, that's, that's just me.
Lots of people, I think, are forward to seeing that.
I'm quoted that for years and years and years.
I mean, no harm in putting it on for a vote, and if people overwhelmingly say, no, we want it in there, then we're done with it.
Is there a process, is there for someone to opt out if they're really concerned about that, do you know?
There's not a process.
Oh, so it was a close vote?
All out.
Oh, overwhelmingly, no.
Overwhelmingly, leave it the way it is.
Oh, okay, well...
Yeah, that's why I say, leave it alone.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mike Pickens.
Um...
Yeah, Mike's...
Oh, that's fine, if you don't have to.
But what, yeah, but so...
If the state mandates it, then that's something different. It's not really happening.
And so one of the other things, though, was the delinquent taxes, because it's a little shamey.
Too bad.
And eats up a bunch of pages.
It's gonna be down to a page and a half this year.
And then sometimes, right, by the, by the time, it's, um, a lot of times they're actually paid off, so by the time they end it, like...
So designates, if they paid it off, there's a little asterisk there, the guy will know they paid it off, it was paid, I don't have a problem with posting it, even if my name was in it, if I was late.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
See nothing wrong with having that in there.
Nope.
But they pay them off before they have a star put there, so everybody knows they've covered it.
Most of them have been paid off this year, weren't gonna be...
So they won't be in there?
Well, they'll be in there with asterisks, but yes, they'll be in there. Um, and then the other question I had going through the town report, we pay per page, do we need two pages in there saying what the transfer station and recycling center does and doesn't take? It's two pages of the town report.
It's important, though.
I don't know, I...
Is there a way to consolidate it down to one?
Pretty hard.
I probably could.
Just, just list, just, we take this, we don't take this?
Why can't we put that on our website?
That's what I said.
It is on the website and it is posted down there, we just got some very colorful, large signs.
So then I don't see it.
Down there.
Put it in the report.
Um...
Save a page, that would represent a...
Save two pages if you don't put it in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If it's on our website and if it's posted down there.
Just put a blurred content, uh, consult the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't mind listing their hours, but we list every last thing that can and can't go in there.
No, that's crazy.
Okay, so put their hours and then put, go to the website, you know?
I guess I never noticed, no.
I'm sorry, I'm new, I went through it with a pine tooth comb.
That's fine.
No, that's fine, that's a good thing.
Doesn't understand recycling centers. You don't have to worry about recycling centers over there, right?
No, she's just worried about saving us pages.
Pages, yes.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm picking on her.
It'll get me there.
Yeah, I'll get it later.
Yeah, don't listen to Bunch.
Yeah, don't listen to me.
Okay.
Okay.
And then if you're okay with that schedule, I need a signature, please, so I can sign that on.
Um, all right, uh, homestead penalty abatement for hundred and three twenty-six, and it was a, uh, a first time...
It was a first time.
First time. Incident we've always signed off on.
We have, I make mostly sign up on it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then the, uh, we have to assign the, um, assessment errors and omissions, and it was just name changes, not value changes.
There was no value changes. She didn't tell me where you had to sign, so, and I don't know, how many of you have to sign, so if you could all sign it, that would be great.
Yeah, I know. Might as well sign it.
Take a spot.
Okay. There's a good place to sign.
There, right there.
Okay.
Sign small, so we can all fit on that line.
Oh, geez, yeah, there's not a lot of blank, uh, space on that.
No, there's not.
Has anyone ever seen, has, you seen my large signature?
It all depends on me, I've signed my, my signature, it's worse and worse as we go.
I have the ability to sign very small, so, that'll give you guys some extra room.
Good. We appreciate that.
And so is this, um, is this what that last item is of new business? For the West Creek Culvert grant?
That's the West Creek Culvert grant, I have, uh, two pages here, the first one, um, I'm not filling out the dollar amounts, I'm waiting for Brian Sanderson to do that, I just need you guys to sign this one, uh, saying that the work is complete, has been accepted by the town, the work has been performed in accordance with the grant agreement with Vermont Agency of Transportation for the project, and the town has paid for the expenses shown, and I have the canceled checks to go along with every invoice to take to Brian, so that's this one, so if you could sign that one. And then this one is for...
That's one you're gonna sign.
The second one.
Oh my God, Dave.
He did.
Well, I told you, listen, man, I'm trying to be nice to you guys, you know, I know, Alicia, you gotta take, print near the whole page.
Yep, Alicia, I restrained myself.
There you go.
Alicia, this one here is just your signature at the bottom.
Okay.
So this one's just Alicia. And then I can take those to Brian Sanderson on Tuesday.
Great.
And take care of that.
So fill this part out, too?
I think that's where you were supposed to sign.
In that tiny little space, I went for the big space.
That's okay, just sign, or just print your name again.
They'll understand.
They'll get their idea.
I'm gonna print my name here, so they think I know what I was talking about.
There you go.
You're learning.
Do the other one the same way, they'll think, oh, the other one, oh, the other one, we all sign. Nobody ever looks at this stuff anyways.
So I have Mickey Mouse on it.
Exactly.
All right, I think we're done with new business, then. Okay, so, old business, ARPA discussion. I know we had one more, we had no, one more request.
Um, we did, it was the seniors, yes, they provided letters, which I put in your packets. And then Pat had questions on four invoices, if ARPA was covering it or not, because she wants to make sure they hit the right buckets.
Okay.
So she asked me to bring them to you to find out. Um, one was from Ferguson Water Works for all of the...
Standby for the...
The, the sidewalks.
Red paper?
Yep.
That was ARPA.
That was ARPA.
But you guys never voted on it, she needs you guys to vote and say, yes, it was ARPA.
Did we know?
Thought we did.
I thought we did.
It wasn't in any meeting minutes.
I make a motion that we, uh, assign those for ARPA money.
Yep.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And then she had to do a recreation dock deposit for the dock, for the rep department.
Yep.
And she wanted to know, she knows Jen has a grant for part of it, but she wanted to know if the rest of it was gonna be paid out of ARPA, or if it's supposed to be added.
I thought it was coming out of the recs, fundraising.
She did fundraising for part of it, she has a grant for part of it.
Do you know what's left?
I am not sure on this, she has a check for one thousand seven hundred and two seventy-eight, and she's asking me if it's going to ARPA.
No. I think that was, I think that was grants and, uh, fundraising, that's what I remember.
That's what I remember, too.
Yeah, they, I think they had enough.
They had enough to do it.
Okay.
Because that was about at the first budget discussion.
Okay.
Right.
I will let Pat know that, I wasn't sure I was in and out of meetings and didn't have everything. Um, and I think that's all she, that Pat had for me to ask you about for ARPA.
That did ask for ARPA for something, like, specific, too.
She had originally said...
Was it the tennis courts or something, wasn't it something like that they wanted to do?
Was it the benches?
No, she, no, that was, that was in her budget, we asked her to take those out.
Like, she cut that?
No, I thought ARPA was either tennis, resurfacing of tennis courts, I thought the partial, partial payment for the dock was in there, whatever wasn't fundraised or came through the grant, and then the, um, basketball court.
And the dredging of the pond, but she's waiting on quotes for the tennis courts and the dredging still.
I guess we can just keep that in the back of our minds.
I mean, we can always take that out after if it has to.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean...
I mean, monies can be moved.
Yeah, and we...
It's not in stone.
We haven't made a lot of final decisions, any final decisions really on that.
We haven't made any, we gotta begin to...
Just the police.
Get a list of...
And then we have to have a special meeting, I think, to do all that, just, rather than, uh, you know...
That's fine, and, and so if we want to continue this another time, except for just in case, making sure everybody did see the letter from the Pittsburgh seniors that I, um, asking for thirty thousand. Because apparently the council of aging no longer provides them with trips and the things they used to do, so. Yes.
That piece of paper that I garnered this afternoon.
Fabulous.
If you care.
No, I do.
I called the Chamber of Economic Development for the Rutland Region this afternoon, knowing that they're deeply involved in ARPA funding for a lot of different towns. And I learned that they have, they have been advising several towns in the area about ARPA eligibility and projects that were eligible projects, projects not, and reasons by. As a matter of fact, this is public. The town of Rutland has submitted a letter to the chamber to review many of the projects that they want to spend water, spend, waste water. They want, they would like to spend money on, to make sure that these projects are ARPA eligible and are not gonna kick back. And this is, this is something that the chamber just does because you're a member.
Okay.
And it's something that you want to avail yourself of, like you can either get with Ann or get with Alicia and fill you in on the details. And it might help in your spending, is it eligible, is it not?
Absolutely.
A good project, a bad project, those type of things.
We need to make a list and then do that and then go from there.
But Lyle Jepson down there gave me this today and said it was free to share. And so they're reviewing, right now they're reviewing fairly large requests from one town, up to $4 million. Some requests.
Wow.
Yeah. So if you want, that might, I don't know if that'll help you or.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's free now.
Yeah.
No.
What, you want some ARPA?
The sidewalks, I know you're already kind of, you're marked that.
Yep.
But I've just been thinking about it, that was the amount for the paving. I don't know if you want to add a little extra to that because of the areas that we have to dig out and possibly add gravel.
Okay.
So there might be a little more expense to it.
Yep, all right.
Just a thought.
An idea, what it might be, another 20 or 10?
I, yeah, I wouldn't think more than 10. But I mean, you know, maybe 10 to cover it and then.
Okay. Where were we at, 80?
Yeah, I think it was 80, wasn't it?
Eighty, eighty-five.
Yeah, I think it was between 80 and 90, varied a little bit, but yeah.
But I just wanted to.
You might as well do it.
Taking more of my money.
Do you think they're gonna pay that by another 10 years, redo it? I doubt it.
Oh, no, definitely.
That's gonna be there for another 15, 20. You might as well do it right, because there ain't no way.
Yeah.
Hell, that's gonna happen, my friends.
Yeah, but no, I just was, been thinking about that, you might want a little extra.
Yeah.
Towards that project.
Yes.
On October 5th, Jen Pop was present to discuss the recreation department requests. This is revisit ARPA. Currently, she is working on obtaining quotes for a dock, as the last quote received was for $20,000, which she is also writing grants for matching funds. Quotes are also being sought for resurfacing the tennis courts and basketball courts, which is anticipated to be around 25,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, so let's, yeah, maybe we can get together with Butch and figure out that piece. And then we can find a date, just to meet, just about ARPA funds. We'll move this along, so you don't have to sit here too much longer. Is that fair though? That's, okay.
No, I think we need to get a list and then start.
Get a good list.
Get a list, see how much, what we have, the list is, and start, well, and then go through this.
We may not be over.
Find out what ones aren't eligible, and then from there, then we pair down to what we got.
Because we're not under the gun really, I mean, we've got time.
Well, no, but it's gonna go faster than we think.
Oh, of course it is.
All right, so animal control ordinance, which is based on VLCTs.
So I took the class from VLCT, they had an animal control ordinance class, and they gave us this template. So I just put town of Pittsburgh in there, and then I looked at three surrounding towns to see what they charge for their fees and penalties, or whatever you wanna call fines. And I kind of went middle of the road. I didn't go the most lenient, but I didn't do the most strict. I kind of picked in the middle of the road for those.
Now, I didn't get a chance to look that over. Does it have anything about noise to deal, because I had calls, this is still going on.
That's too bad.
Never gonna stop.
Well, yeah, the only thing we have is, well, yeah, we have nuisance five.
Disturbing the peace.
Disturbing the peace. I guess that's really what it is.
It says, "A dog that disturbs the quiet comfort and repose of others by barking, whining, calling, or howling for a continuous period of 30 minutes or more. This regulation shall not apply to dogs in a kennel or boarding facility which has received a zoning permit under the town zoning regulations. The zoning permit will govern the use of the kennel or boarding facility."
Like the human society, yeah.
Right.
So those covered, I guess.
It does, it's just.
Well, the thing is, what are you allowed to do for a nuisance dog? I mean, it's a nuisance, it's not a biting, like a biting dog is, that's pretty cut and dry.
Right, that was the issues, right, was the, then what the penalty would be for.
What the penalty would be for a nuisance dog, that was the issue. Well, that is the issue.
Yeah, so disturbing the peace, according to what I read, it's fines. It's a warning or a $50 fine for your first offense. Second offense would be a $100 fine, third and subsequent offense, impoundment and/or $150 fine.
So you can't impound them.
So.
But it puts teeth in it then.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It has to have teeth in it, or it's not gonna work.
Right.
So there's just, yeah, there just needs to be enforcement and ticketing and finding out who, so.
That will go to the registered owner or the property owner.
Yeah, does our animal control officer, he can ticket, right?
Are we gonna have one?
We have one.
Well, we may not, but.
Not for long.
But you can have it so your police, any police officer from town.
Right. What was that mark?
There is one.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Well, yeah.
Dave Solia.
Right now, but.
Yeah, there's a, I think it was a, I can't pronounce his name.
It used to be Cody Hess.
Yeah, is Cody done?
Yeah, I don't think he's doing it.
That's what, he was the last one that showed up at my place too.
Cody Hess, and then I think went to Dave Solia.
Yeah, Dave Solia took his place.
Yeah, Dave Solia took Cody's place.
Well, he's going to the sheriff's.
That's why, I guess.
That's what I've heard.
That's what I've heard, so I don't know.
Well, then we'll find some.
Any, I wouldn't assume that we could appoint, have it written in any police officer from the town of Pittsburgh.
According to the class I took, your police department or the animal control officer can enforce.
Okay.
Okay, we're covered.
Okay, I've covered, okay.
Because we don't have a constable, it's an actual police department, they can ticket and they can enforce as well.
So is there anything in here that people think we should change? When we were going through this the other month or however long ago it was, I'm trying to remember what, I feel like we did have some things that came up, right, that we wished had been worded differently?
When I came, it wasn't discussed, so I'm not sure.
I know, I know, I'm just thinking aloud.
Might have been discussed with that dog situation down by the bank.
Oh, maybe.
That was a long time, a very long time ago.
At least.
Year and a half ago.
Yeah, that was, well.
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago, I think.
But I think that's when it started to be discussed with an ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then they moved out of town.
Yeah, it hasn't been anything recent.
No.
Okay.
And this would replace the animal control ordinance you have now.
It's a start.
Is it just the fees that are different?
Uh, no, pretty much the entire document is different. That's why it's not a highlight in red versus. It, 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 it's the updated version that VLCT has gone through and done their.
Did you say it's highlighted in red?
No, I said it, this one's not highlighted in red. It would have been an entirely red document versus.
The whole thing would have been red if.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's all new, pretty much.
I'll make a motion to adopt it, so we've got it in place and.
I'll second it.
We can always.
We can always change it.
We can always change it.
Yeah, I suppose that's true. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I've got one right here for you guys to sign. And Alicia, you're at the top, so there's a nice big long spot for you.
Thanks. Remember to fill this out before the end of this meeting. All right, well, we're signing that, special appropriations policy. I really was organized before.
You said you were.
I was, I don't know what happened.
Well, when I first got on the board, we had, we made a new policy for that, and we were supposed to bring up like, I don't know, four or five, I think it was five, every year.
To save.
Bring them up and to hold on, yes. And it never got done, I don't believe.
Right, instead of just like blanket.
Instead of blanket, yes.
It's extensive, the list we have.
It's an extensive list and it's a lot of money.
Yeah, I know, I'd done, I'd looked into it at one point. For a town our size, it's quite a bit more than other towns do.
It's over.
Over 100,000.
Over 100,000, yeah.
A lot of money.
It's a lot of money. So, and I mean, there's some in there that would never come up, because like the ambulance. I think there's three or four others that we can't because they're fixed. We just, we have to pay into them, but, so those would never come up, but it's the other ones.
Well, so I think what, what we have now is that if it was to, right, if it's a new, new one, or if an existing organization asks for more. They need, they need to get 5%.
There's nothing in writing, but yes, it's a verbal. It's a verbal policy at the moment. There's nothing in writing that I found from the past.
They can present it on the floor at the county meeting.
But I know we, that got passed. That got passed when I first got on the board, because I looked at that number and I was like, you know, if people want to do this, that's fine, but they need the opportunity to say no to some of these things. So I don't know where that ever went.
Yeah, so I was here the night you discussed it the last time, when somebody came in and you found out that there were two organizations, one organization collecting two pots of money.
Yes.
And I think there was some sort of a decision by the board to ask somebody to come back with.
With a presentation.
With a presentation on that, and I think that may have slipped through the cracks. I'm guessing, I'm not a member of the board, so, but I do remember that discussion, and because the board was interested in, in trying to figure out what policy should or shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Didn't we also discuss though, too, that it would, that it had to go to vote? It had been voted this way to begin with, to adopt them all?
Yeah, I remember this.
Oh, that, yeah, so it should be in town meeting, because I think, yeah, I think that the policy went before the town. Maybe it got voted down, I don't remember, but I know, because I was a stickler on that, and I know it came to a vote somewhere. Now, so it would have been town meeting in the last four years, so.
I think this board voted on it. I remember night, we voted to present five, I think you might remember that one too.
No, yeah.
Four or five a year, yeah.
Four or five each year.
It was four or five a year for this board to review.
To review. Is that what it was?
And if they were new or.
New, they would have to go to voters.
They had to come here first to get on the warning and then go to town meeting floor.
You are right, I think. So we're gonna reveal it. I think she's right.
I've got tape too.
I know she's right. I'll tell you, she's.
I argue with her occasionally.
It's okay. It's good though, doesn't it?
It never has, but it's fun.
It's the Irish.
I think you're right. I remember that now.
Because what started that was when they took each appropriation, and I think it was Don Nicholas that halted that at town meeting and said, "I move that we just do it one package."
Right, because they were doing each individual one at town meeting, voting on it.
That, you're 100% right, and it was taken forever.
And they all passed anyways.
Yeah, paint was drying faster.
Yeah, it was.
It took up quite a lot of time.
It did.
Yeah.
And I think I remember him about three or four down saying.
Make a motion that we do my.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that was a lot of years ago.
Yeah, it was, yeah, for Don.
Well, this Chamber of Economic Development now, they're asking for $3,000 in addition to what they've had before, I believe it looks like.
No, it's the same.
It's the same. It's the same.
And they came and gave us a presentation.
They do annually.
They do annually.
But as far as I know, they never mentioned that they had brought one job to the town in the last year or so. They had promoted recreation quite a bit.
Yep.
But I don't think there was one job that came to this town because of them. I mean, seems like we're not getting much for our money.
Oh, so, Madam Chair. So, so, Joe, I, I hear you, I hear that, and they do way more than just job recruitment. They do people recruitment, they do region recruitment for total economic development. They're, they're.
All housing and everything.
They do housing, they're gonna, they're gonna, if the board agrees, they're gonna review your ARPA stuff. They do a lot of that stuff beyond counting jobs.
But I think it's nice.
They're, even if they bring a job to Rutland City, the person could be living in Pittsburgh.
That's just not.
Or shopping. They brought up kamutas and the trails in some of their highlights for when they drop their families in.
So there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of hidden value to the chamber, and I think, yeah, like that's, that's all I'm gonna say.
And I think.
Well, I'm not saying they don't do any good, that's not, but I couldn't see. In my recollection of their presentation, they never boasted about bringing one job to this town. They talked about recreation and introducing people to that, and that's all fine and dandy. But it seems like you gotta have a job, make a dollar before you need to worry about.
That's your, that's the board's decision, but it goes way beyond just counting jobs.
Right.
I think what Joe means, when they did present, it was mostly about the, I'm gonna forget, whatever program they have attracting people from, you know.
Valley region.
Yeah, and it was, it, we, you did kind of get the idea that it was, well, they did say it was a lot of people who are just gonna be working from home, so. Out of state jobs, but living here kind of thing, so, you know.
Could have people, no, no.
So. All right, ooh, cheese him. Oh god, pencil down.
Scared the stuff out of me.
Hold that again.
What, what?
How he's doing.
Dropping stuff, dropping stuff. Chad, I just realized you're up again. Now I realize the confusion when, now I realize the confusion when we were talking about reclassification roads, now we have road discontinuations.
Okay.
Ah, yeah.
That's the email from the.
Yeah, that's the Shaw Road.
That's the Shaw.
Okay.
And then we kind of decided not to do that, right?
So we're not making, taking any.
I wouldn't do it right now.
No.
It wasn't discontinuing the whole road.
No, no.
It was just a certain.
Yeah, so I think there's enough.
I got confused about that.
They're not shooting up there without us doing that, at this point.
All right, budget discussions. Boy, who wants to do that now, this eight o'clock hour? Well.
What were we down to, on the bottom?
I don't know. Is this something we want to try to do again on an off-meeting meeting? So we could devote an entire meeting to this?
I would think so, maybe this with the, this and ARPA, together maybe.
All right, yeah, let's do that, we'll.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
That's my bedtime.
All right.
How about you, Joe?
Um, so the last thing on the agenda is delinquent taxes, which I guess the good news is, we don't have a lot of.
We're getting down there. We actually had one of our larger ones come in this week and pay, so we're down to, I think, I forgot to grab that one. I printed it this morning, or last night, last night before I left. I think we're down to like 205,000.
Okay.
There are a few on here, however, we had, I'm reading, I took a delinquent tax seminar class through VLCT last week. And I haven't read the entire guidelines yet, but they stress the fact that we really have to make sure that people know that VHAP is an option, and you have to give them several warnings. Which I've put them in envelopes, but I don't know if that's enough of a warning, having, putting the VHAP in there.
Right.
Time and time again, if that's enough, or if we have to send a letter saying, you know, these are your steps before you're being put to tax. Time and time again, if that's enough, or if we have to send a letter saying, you know, these are your steps before you're being put to tax sale. I'm not sure at this point. So I can come back to this at another meeting after I've had time to read the new delinquent text, because there's a bunch of changes that are coming down the pike. Um, where it sounds like we might be charging the wrong interest rates. According to VLCT, the statute has changed slightly. So now for the first three months of delinquent taxes, it's supposed to be one percent. Then after three months, it goes up to one and a half percent per month that you're delinquent.
Hmm.
Um, is one of the changes that they mentioned within the training, but I'd like time to read the book and I just haven't had the time.
Yeah.
In the last week to read the book and find out the changes. So that is something we can circle back to.
That sounds good, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, unless anybody has anything else, I believe that ends the, uh, open part of our meeting.
Did you want to sort of budget meeting?
Um, I don't have my calendar on me. Is anybody else?
So I have an answer for Dave on, uh, distribution of fines, uh, from the courts. And in title thirteen, uh, chapter two twenty-three, section fifty-two, fifty-one. Do I need to read that?
Give me that again.
Okay, it's title thirteen.
Yep.
Chapter two twenty-three, subchapter zero zero three. It gives a whole explanation how the, how all this, how all this comes down and it's not set by the state police. It's set by the courts. And there's several sections on how that fine is distributed. And, uh, within that framework, the town, to get more money, the town will have to do some work to, there's a formula, uh, that's recent from, I'll go through it really briefly, cause it's getting late. There's a formula used for distribution shall reflect a percentage of the town's law enforcement expenditures as relates to the town's total municipal taxing effort, less school taxes. And there's other things that the town has to do to get more money. Basically, uh, the administrative charge from the courts is twelve dollars and fifty cents per ticket and that's a statute. So the rest of it, uh, may have, is probably available, uh, to the town, but with some work to justify that. Read that statute and then we'll talk.
Okay.
If you get a second.
Yep, well, I do.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, it makes sense. I mean, the court's got to recoup, you know, their costs. I understand that.
In the meantime, I'll talk to legislative council and see where we're going with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Awesome.
Chad, I've just been sitting here. Later on my machine.
I know, thank you.
I got chat.
Uh, so, January fourth is our next meeting.
Yep.
So do we want to do the eleventh, the Wednesday after?
I may not be here for either one, so I'll try to.
Okay.
I might be able to come in under my phone or something, but I'm not sure.
Mark, do you know what your schedule is looking like for January?
Eleventh is good right now.
Is that going to be too long?
It just puts us in a crunch, because we'll have to meet the fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and hopefully on the eighteenth, we'll have everything done.
To adopt it.
To adopt it before the warrant and then we have, the newsletter deadline is in there too, and we've got to get a town report done.
Twenty-eighth isn't working for anyone?
I don't know if I'll be here, because after you telling the weather, I may not go to Ohio till next week.
Okay.
Oh, I, I'd put it off, Dave, about when you're home. I'd wait a week.
Yeah, cause I got a haul of trailers, so those sixty, eighty mile an hour winds, I don't like that.
Well, if you listen to the weather forecast, you wouldn't be supposed to.
We also don't need to do a Wednesday.
No.
Would anyone, would anyone entertain the third, the day before our regular meeting to talk, work on the budget? I know it's back to back, but.
My son turns twenty that day. I might be emotional.
I probably definitely.
Or.
And it's looking to be like unfortunate.
Or the fifth, I don't know.
I'm not available till April sixteenth, so. Be on stage.
So when are you available before then?
Uh, probably not, but if I leave Friday, I'm gone.
Okay, yeah.
Can you zoom in?
I can probably zoom in maybe. I'll try to zoom in whenever you pick. If it works, it works, but I can't guarantee it.
Yeah.
I'll try.
Alright, so.
Alicia?
Yes.
You guys pick a date.
Are we having an executive session? I missed that.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait to ask Tom the questions and then.
Okay.
So.
It's so hard to schedule things.
Most part, I was going to have to come in zoom.
Well, that's going to be the worst, and the worst part, I'm not.
So we want to do it, uh.
Falls on the forebit.
The, we'll do it on the third. Then if we don't.
It's my kid's birthday. I'm probably going to have dinner in Bert's.
Oh, that's right, it's your son's birthday. Sorry, okay. I forgot.
About the fifth?
About the fifth?
It works for me.
Still be drinking a fifth on the fifth from the third?
He's turning twenty, not twenty-one.
Oh, okay, alright, well, you know.
Say this is a drinking meeting?
Apparently. Um, the fifth works for me.
It should work for me.
Alright, uh, Thursday the fifth at, um, earlier would be better, because we might be taking quite a while.
I think it, I think that's a good idea.
So.
Four o'clock, four thirty, four, four thirty?
Yeah, four, it'd be four or five.
Okay, five.
Okay, cause I'm back to work. Okay.
But if you, well, I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Fifth at five, I'm not sure, but I'll, I might get down.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so let's aim for, we'll aim for January fifth at five.
Yeah.
Okay.